All right, I welcome everybody. Four meetings for the 24th of the horizon.
The United States of America into a republic of which stands one nation under God and in the world with liberty and justice for all.
Anderson, Bader Fur, Kucher, Holstein, Yarris, Ravish, here, Doobie.
President.
Seven present. Well, thank you. My foundation is very big and I'm feeling good in the weather. I think Walter has some updates on. See if some changes around here and Greg had them in the paper, so we'll wait for the. Any additions or deletions or changes?
Mr. President, I'd like to add. Item F, the approval of Sarah Braun as high school principal to the non-consent agenda. Item G, approval of Tiffany Jamie to the middle school principal. And item H, P A A S A contract.
Force. Motion to abort. All in the favor?
Aye.
Post. Any comments on the agenda? Public hearing.
Move home in a public hearing for the proposed budget 2324. 24 going to stand.
Moving on to the full of budgets for all in the favor?
Aye.
Aye, post.
And here's to the amendments for the 2324 budget and the actions for 24. So state and federal variations for this current year. We received a trade picking grant of 220 some thousand dollars that we're going to carry over into next year. Mental health and safety grants are completed and our ability funds all also are completed. Next year, we're obviously we don't know what the state budget and the foundation allowance are yet and we don't know where our student account is. Revenue for this current year. We had a property tax increase. And our transportation grant money that we received. And obviously the big one, the S R three equation, which we lost 2.5 million dollars additional money. With the amended revenue of 18,560. Expenses. Again, as a reclamation, we didn't have a decrease in our virtual learning costs from previously. Utility costs were decreased this year. I'm assuming it was because of my winter. We had many unfilled positions, so that was a costly thing unfortunately. And the fuel costs, we anticipate that they remain high. The capital outlays for this year includes we did a launch of all searches. Steaming stages of the roof project. Beginning of the softball stadium seating, soccer things such as dugout, spence, et cetera. We put in a new heating unit at P A A, the administration office. We got new air conditioning last fall. Sometimes I got a new P A system, the shop dust filter. It had major repairs that was needed. And the Mont Forest parking lot we're starting and the lockout camping system. Capital outlays that are coming that we're going to transfer money for. Completion of projects such as the roof project, the stadium seating and Mont Forest parking lot. We've got a pump house project that's in the works. We're talking about the heating and heat tract system at Central. Central also needs a new fire alarm system. Linwood parking lot needs upgraded and we're going to look at purchasing another bus. For the next year revenue, we're currently waiting the state of Michigan budget. We're estimating the foundation allowance to increase somewhere about 2.8%. And I'm expecting the people count to kind of level off. We've lost quite a few in the last few years, but this is the year we didn't lose many, so I'm quite certain that we're not going to lose many this upcoming year either. Expenses. All lines will of course have the negotiated contractual changes. We're expecting the benefits also to increase. It includes retirement savings and staffing replacements and current additions. Also on my next year's budget is cost purchase and then our loan purchase. We are protecting a deficit and we'll know more once we get our information from the state and I'll be able to report on that better in January. Food service. For this current year, state revenue increased with the universal breakfast and lunch program. Capital outlays, we did purchase the food service van. And two made an effort to go to each building and try to find out what equipment they needed. So we did spend some money on making sure each building had what they needed. And just to note, the food service fund balance and that, see three months expenses are a third of the budget for the federal government, so we're close. And what we're trying, so. Next year. We are quite certain we're still continuing to give the universal breakfast lunch program money. And we're also looking at with everything else. Higher salaries and higher benefits. And product costs are also expected to remain high. Student activity. This is for the year. As you can see, we've had a lot more fundraising happening, a lot more activities happening, and I think it's because COVID's finally at a spin and kids are getting more involved. And we have a lot more going on this year than we did last year. And then this is just a note, the board of judges must adopt the budget for all special revenue fund. According to gas feed. And then activities includes fundraisers, advanced field trips, and other student activities. In the sense it's very hard to budget. Student activities, we don't know what's going to happen this year. We keep it pretty simple. You pick a number, it's coming in, it's coming out, and that's what we adopt. And then there's just some notes about what's not included, what's not allowable for expenses, such as gifts, balcony fees. Food and beverage not specific to the student or the innovation. Flowers for cigarette cartons, contributions and donations outside of the application nexus. And funds must be spent on the students who was raised on board. So I just want to thank board, administrative staff for supporting me in this environment. Especially I S D A Grace, Grace has been very supportive and very helpful to me and I appreciate you guys' help. Any questions?
Mr. President, I gave you motion to approve the consent agenda and pay the bills totaling 767,887.24.
For any action?
Yeah. Sarah Silverman, the chair of the board.
She was here by her, went to the I S D and Linwood, was stayed within the district. Yeah, and now come back.
And then with Mr. Wiki, do we know where she's going live?
She's at the counseling person. She's going to be at the counselor and receive the job in the district for counseling.
All right. Just want to make sure what we need.
Yep.
For us.
All right. Any action? Roll call. Bader Fur.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Kucher.
Yes.
Holstein.
Yes.
Yarris.
Yes.
Ravish, yes, Doobie.
Yes.
Seven zero. On to communication.
Thank you, President Doobie. First is a Title IX update for Neola. We have until August 1st to approve this, so it will be in our July, before July, we'll probably have a meeting, a policy meeting to look it over. Our Neola rep was on vacation and this came out last week, so I just got the overview today of some of the things. Which I seen, I read some of it, but usually it comes from him. So he talked about some things that we can do and then at our next board meeting, we can approve it. Some information about it. We have policy 2266 is our Title IX policy that we currently have. We have to continue with that policy and continue to train our people. And also implement 2264, which is the new Title IX policy and train our staff on both of these. And the reason is with the legislation, any occurrence or report of a Title IX violation prior to August 1st goes with the old policy. They don't go to the new policy. So the idea of this year at least where we have to still train and know that policy in case anything comes up prior to August 1st. 2264, the new policy is broader, covering discrimination and not just harassment. In the past, it was more of a harassment thing, now it's discrimination. There's a lot of protections for pregnancies also in this. It provides more flexibility for the investigation as well. The 2266 was very rigid, we had to have one person for investigating, one person for the decision, one person, like there were four different groups. People that had to be part of it and now we have some more flexibility where the same person can investigate and maybe report. And we have one person that does the final say, so that is good for us. And there are guidelines for the Title IX notice to our students and staff that are a little bit more stricter, that we have to make sure that everyone has that notice of the new policies. So we will, over the next, before the next board meeting, we will talk about this and then we'll have it on our next board meeting. I just wanted you to get that information in case you've seen something that that's coming up quickly, which it is. Pink Island High School principal recommendation, that's coming up in the non-consent agenda. I just wanted to tell you that I'm very excited to be able to recommend Dr. Braun as our next high school principal. Her extensive knowledge of special education processes and laws, curriculum testing, best practices for teaching, as she's been her direction, director of instructional services and leading our P D. These are all great things that will definitely benefit our school. Report with students is amazing. I was at a graduation party yesterday and a parent asked me if we had a person yet for the high school principal and I said no. And they said, well, we hope Dr. Braun, it will be in that seat. So it's cool that the community is also thinking the same way and as highly of Dr. Braun as I did. And if accepted, I am very confident that this will be the first female high school principal Pink Island High School has had. So that's kind of a neat thing that we're able to experience.
So maybe first doctor.
Ooh, I would think so. I would think.
Break all the barriers.
They are, they are, so we're very excited. Which if it also approved, we will post the direction, director of instructional services probably this week and start looking for people that say.
Second doctor.
Oh, Manner, Dr. Manner.
No, Manner was superintendent.
You're right.
Gillette.
Gillette, being Gillette.
But he also got her.
Yes, so you're right, not the first doctor, no first female manager.
And she's the first student doctor.
Any questions? I will move on to project updates. Have some good information, Mount Forest, the cross-country parking project has begun. Mr. Johnson met with me today, he had a few ideas on things to make it a little bit better and I said absolutely, we can get more spots into the space we have. And he had some ideas for better drainage and I told him absolutely, I mean, what he was saying made sense and I trust that he's doing the right thing. He's already started clearing some things around the pavilion. So he's on it and he said we should start seeing sand probably within a week or two weeks and start doing the drainage. So I'm excited to see that. Stadium scoreboard posts are all set. I wanted to make sure and thank a few companies that have helped make this project possible because they donated a lot. I mean, what it took to get just a post up are amazing and we're not done yet, but Pumpford Construction, R and R Ready Mix, Groundbreakers, Michigan Ag System. Focal Metal Works, Murray Painting, Bach Electric and the Pink Island Athletic Boosters, which are paying for that as well. It's amazing how many different organizations had to come together and, you know, donated their time for this and donated crane and it's amazing, you know, when people see that we need some help and they come together, so. A few of these have also helped with our soccer dugouts, if you've seen those report and they're starting to take the forms down. But Pumpford Construction and R and R work with Dale Billingsley from Mercury Construction to get those done. And we found out that Northern Concrete is going to pour a precast roof, big cement roof. And then they will be transported here and another crane will pick them up and put them on top, so we won't have to worry about shingles or anything like that. So it's more support, you know, from our community is amazing. So the walls, I was wondering the same thing because they're like lines and things, I'm like, ooh, is that what it's going to look like? But no, they are finishing it off with some kind of coating, possibly painting if needed, so those are going to look very professional when they're done. Our roofing project is beginning, I met today with a gentleman and he asked me about materials. They're going to start dropping off materials tomorrow in our parking lot, they already dropped off like a loader. Because that will probably be, we'll see a lot going on very soon with that as well, which is good. I was wondering when that was going to start, hopefully we could get it all done before August and our students and teachers start here. But that is, is starting. Our school-based health center bid is on the non-consent agenda for approval. I just want to remind board members that the funds for this are going through us, but will all be paid for through the grant money, through the cooperation with the surrounding area health center. So we're very fortunate to have them get these grants, find everything and then the money goes through us. So that will be a little more work for our staff, but they're very happy to do that. Yes. Let's see, oh, and I did also want to thank our unions here at the school. Our seal orders, UFW have already been taken care of, but now the P E A and the administrators, P A A S A for their cooperation with negotiations. I know many districts struggle through this process, you know, and sometimes they can't be in the same room and it's very heated. And that is not the case with our staff. It is great working with them and great having employees that make this process beneficial for both, so. And thank you, Mr. Yarrow, for helping out, he was on our committee to help with the P E A also, so. Appreciate that with everybody that made these things happen. Any questions?
Just someone, did, I have this one, did Himco? Didn't Himco do something?
Yes.
Add that. Another. Uh, administrative staff. Mr. Samper. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
We, we fill our special position with Sarah, I'm really excited for her to kind of bring her expertise, especially from the emotional environment classroom. And so that'll be nice to have her, especially for some of our baby girl friends. Interviewed an E L A teacher today, so hoping to offer that position and get rolling and we still have one more open and a math teacher, but we have some candidates for that, so we'll keep moving forward. Hoping to fill those positions as soon as we can.
How old is your resignation tonight, is that going to affect anything?
No, that's who we interviewed her today.
And I did want to, I did mention that we have a M A S S P conference going on at our house. We have some administrators that are there in case you're looking and seeing a few less and Dr. Braun will be heading up after the session, after the board meeting. So it's a great conference, great information that comes back to our school for that.
Anyway. Roll on.
Yep, agreed.
Okay. Board committees.
Well, the board committee met and seen the ladies of our work, so. Well. Hey, we had to assure her that what she was doing was right, so. It worked, didn't it, Heather?
Non-consent agenda. Oh, yeah.
I'm going to close it. The public hearing and the vote.
Motion support, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Now. Now. P E A contract. Move to approve the P E A contract, changes recommended, pending union ratification.
Support.
Motion support, any discussion? Yarris.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Bader Fur.
Yes.
Kucher.
Same.
Holstein.
Yes.
Ravish, yes, Doobie.
Yes.
Six with one extension. Health center renovation project.
I moved to approve the base side. Center renovation project, magnitude 232,000.
Support.
Moving on, any discussion?
All the funds are coming from that way.
Yep, that's the grant funds. Yep.
Speeding when it's directed open day.
It depends on the construction. Yeah, they wanted it to be open at the start of the school year, but I don't think it's, it couldn't get to that point yet. Depending on the materials and when they get the cabinets in, that's a big thing, is when they get all the slides and then they need, so. A S A.
She didn't push it back yet, it's original thing, starting up.
Yeah, yeah.
Roll call. Yarris. Anderson.
Yes.
Bader Fur.
Yes.
Kucher.
Yes.
Holstein.
Yes.
Ravish, yes, Doobie.
Yes.
Seven. The first reading of the 2425 elementary.
Move to approve the first reading of the elementary handbook.
Motion support, any discussion?
How do we, how do these changes come about, what process? What's the process? You and your staff?
Karen and I said.
Taking input, you know, if you have questions or concerns about it, bring that up.
Not many changes that I see.
It is, whatever we have is worth for quite a while. Any discussion? All in the favor?
Aye.
Close? Okay, the 2324 final amended budget.
Move to approve the final amended budget for 2324.
Motion support, any discussion? Roll call. Bader Fur.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Kucher.
Yes.
Holstein.
Yes.
Yarris.
Yes.
Ravish, yes, Doobie.
Yes.
Seven zero. The 2425 proposed budget.
Move to approve the 2425 proposed budget.
Support.
Motion support, any discussion? Roll call. Bader Fur.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Kucher.
Yes.
Holstein.
Yes.
Yarris.
Yes.
Ravish, yes, Doobie.
Yes.
Seven zero. Other comments? Oh, that's right, that's right. Okay, item F.
I gave you a separate sheet.
Hold on, hold on one second. Okay, all right, back to item F.
Move to approve Sarah Braun as our high school principal.
Support.
Motion support, any discussion?
Yeah, I would just like to acknowledge Ms. Dr. Braun's professionalism and working with our district. And I kind of wondered if this might happen when that position became available. Her passion for education and for students in general, saw parallel in my experience and so I would gladly welcome her board that position.
Agreed.
You wear lots of hats since I was here retired, it would belong to different change for me. On exceptions, all in the know.
Roll call.
Roll call. Bader Fur.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Kucher.
Yes.
Holstein.
Yes.
Yarris.
Yes.
Ravish, yes, Doobie.
Yes.
Seven zero. Onto the Tiffany Heimy.
Move to approve Tiffany Heimy as the middle school principal.
Support, support. It just doesn't say what steps she's going to be on.
It will be, you're right, it'll be, this is a second year, right, going off, so it's going to be seven, yeah, just continuing.
How is our mission work out now? Is she assistant?
She was an assistant, yeah.
For middle school high school?
Just middle school, she took care of a lot of middle school issues.
Yeah. So what is, so we have high school principal, middle school principal, and then we have Mr. Huber, A D assistant?
He's A P high school and A D, yes, at this point. And this is stuff that we talked about, community administrators. And it gives that middle school some culture, some identity that we've been, I think we've talked about that over the last, like, two years here is that kind of sets the site now. Because they were part of the high school and we want to see them.
Just on that position within that administration, school and school, some other assistant or?
Not right now, no, not right now, this is what it was. Eight, 10 years ago, this is exactly what it was. You know, we may look.
I think about A D.
When Ms. Sundberg was here, it was A P, A D with me, yeah, and just Mr. Hoffman was the middle school principal.
Just want to be sure what, just what we are now.
Yeah, and at this point, this, where we're at, you know, we talk about other things, we talk about possible dealing with students, you know, that could help with certain things. We'll think we're going to.
A lot of things could be the refinations, we always, we always have that standing.
Yeah.
So.
And much like Dr. DeBran, you hear nothing about how much she's here and how much she does and cares for our kids and students, it's going to be a great fit, I'm excited.
Bader Fur.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yeah.
Kucher.
Yes.
Holstein.
Yes.
Yarris.
Yes.
Ravish, yes, Doobie.
Yes.
Seven zero. Onto the P A A S A contract.
Move to approve.
Andrew.
Support.
Motion support. Three, two, three. Any discussion? Roll call. Bader Fur.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Kucher.
Yes.
Holstein.
Yes.
Yarris.
Yes.
Ravish, yes, Doobie.
Yes.
Seven zero. Okay. I think most of you had to keep calling.
Address the board, I'm gonna have steel workers, I just want them to give her approval, I'm asking contract and all of your support, and we currently have seventeen open positions for steel workers, or twelve, excuse me, twelve open positions, so I think that that will, our new matrix will help that. There's a lot, thanks.
What, what are they all in?
I have three bus drivers, the white truck, secretary, two title positions, title pairs, two special ed 111 pairs, a special ed pair, and two pairs of GSAPs. Maybe the secretary's still.
Nope. Yes.
Yeah, all right, well, what's PAA, I have to say. What is the camera in for, I'm like quoting it directly.
Pink Island.
I'm not that.
Pink Island Friday, Association.
Pink Island signing area administrator. Assistant school associate common.
Okay. I'll say it.
Yeah.
If the camera didn't know you.
Could it really, it's not what it is, right, but it shouldn't be somewhere, it shouldn't be like first.
Pink Island area association, school administrators.
Area. House does. Oh, you mean Mariah again. Yeah, it's not scary, you'll wait, it's a area thing too. No.
I guess I have one day superintendent training. It's going to be the same date, August 26th, but at 2:30. Have to, you do not have to. Gary's gonna decide if he doesn't have to. But it has to be done by September 2nd, and we are about the last.
But you can miss it, there's still two dates in September after that.
Yeah, they always will, we know that, they'll keep on, oh, by the way, you can make this one, but it's gonna be here. It's here, before our meeting.
Can you repeat the August 26th?
The 26th.
2:30.
Three. Four. Alright, I got a lot of issues. All of the favor.